Thank you. I will now call this meeting to order, a meeting of Committee of the Whole, December 7, 2022, at 5 o'clock. Since we've just had a special counsel and read the land acknowledgement statement, I won't reread that again. So we'll move on to item three, approval of agenda or additions to the agenda. Are there any additions? Counselor Coburn?
Thank you, Mayor Carlton. I just wondered if I could have two additional items, probably under new business. One is a change, a question regarding a change to our website. And the other one is just a very quick question regarding where we're at with the planned renovations for Campbell Community Centre, not at all meant to be a debate. Just a quick question about where we're at with the timeline for the folks who might be listening in today.
Thank you. Any other additions? Okay, so recommendation is that the agenda be approved as presented or as amended. So, second or mover? Counselor Coburn, and seconded by Deputy Mayor Pringle. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? And again, you may declare at any time during the meeting. No public hearings, no delegations, no correspondence. We're down to staff reports, starting with the clerks department. So the recommendation is that report LEG 2022-015 be received for the information of council to fulfill the requirements of Section 12.3 of the Municipal Elections Act 1996, and that annual elections reserve fund allocations be increased by 3,000 per year to accommodate purchase of new IT equipment to be assigned to council at the commencement of each term. If I could have a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor? Counselor Winters and Counselor Day seconded. So, any discussion? Or is staff speaking to this first, and then we can ask questions after that? Any questions on the report then? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, thank you. So the next is the procedural bylaw updates. Whereas staff have identified opportunities for efficiencies in current council and committee procedures, now therefore Township Procedure Bylaw 2019-125 be amended as described herein, and that a bylaw to amend Procedure Bylaw 2019-125 be presented for enactment at the December 14, 2022, meeting of council. I have a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor, please. Counselor Coburn? Deputy Mayor Pringle? So, any discussion? Counselor Coburn, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to thank staff for making the procedure bylaw a little clearer and I think more efficient in how it will be implemented. I did have one concern, and that is regarding the removal of public question period from the agenda. My understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the two opportunities that folks will have to come and speak will be through preregistration to be on the agenda. And if that's the case, I'm inclined to want to leave the public question period on our agenda. I note that other municipalities have kept this on their agenda. I think, for me, whatever we can do to remove barriers for public engagement is important. And I'm more inclined to support something that allows for more engagement rather than less. So I wonder if you wanted to comment on that, or if council would be willing to entertain that one small change.
Thanks for the question, and through you, Mayor Carlton. It is never the intention to shut down any public engagement or make barriers more difficult. I have to admit, it was unique to see public question period when I came to the township, and particularly as item number 14 on the agenda. So, I think if we look at what we're trying to do is simply move it up in the agenda. My understanding is when people have come and participated in public question period, they often leave dissatisfied because nobody knew the question was coming. And so council was not in a position to answer the question, nor were staff. And so the thought here is simply to give an opportunity to submit a question, and for council and staff to be more prepared to deal with the constituents' question. At any point, council, this is your bylaw. You can waive procedure and allow something different to happen.
So that that last point is particularly important, and thank you for that reminder. My understanding from comments in the past was that the concern was where that item was placed on the agenda. It came so far down that motions were discussed and passed before the public were able to engage in any discussion. So I would have liked to have seen the public question period maybe moved up in the agenda and left on for spontaneous questions. But I think I can live with the notion that we can waive the bylaw to entertain questions during any meeting. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from anyone else in council? Counselor Pringle, or Deputy Mayor Pringle, go ahead.
Yeah, just actually, thank you. Just scrolling through here, too, there was something I did read in here, too, that it's not that we're taking the public question period away, it's just going to be worded a little bit different. And I personally believe, too, if a person has the opportunity to ask their question earlier on in the session, that situation where we maybe pass something that they want to question gets passed before they get the opportunity. So I kind of thought, in my mind, too, if we move it to the top there, we get the question out early. If we have their input in writing before the meeting, so staff can be ready to address the situation, helps out also. And it does say, I can't find it right now, but it did say in here, too, that unwritten questions are certainly to be allowed. I thought I read it here in this bylaw. So I think we're not really taking the question period away, we're just going to maybe move it up and give them the chance to speak when they're here.
I'm going to turn it over to the acting clerk, because I think she's got an answer to this.
I just wanted to provide some additional context. So we're repackaging the public question period to be items included on the agenda. So the preregistration process is only two hours before the meeting, so they can submit questions that day up until, you know, 3:00 PM, and then that would be circulated to staff and to council. So council is aware that the question is coming, and staff are prepared to address the resident, rather than, you know, the resident coming and maybe staff aren't prepared to provide the answer. So it's just intended to improve the experience of the resident when they come to address council.
So if I could speak to that one. My thought is, and I think maybe what Counselor Coburn is getting at, is the fact that it doesn't actually say on our agenda anymore, public question period. And I think most of the public, when they don't see that there, won't realize that there is an opportunity for them to question. So I'm wondering if we just put that item back in right up at the very beginning with the public hearings and delegations, so that they're aware of the fact that there is an ability to have a question period to that.
Through you, Mayor Carlton, perhaps our acting clerk and I can take that away. There's a way to do delegation slash public question period on the agenda.
I think for clarity's sake, that would make it better for the public. We might all understand it, but they won't. So I think if we could do that as a change there. Now, anybody else have questions or concerns on the procedure bylaw? So I have some items that, some questions that I would like to ask. The first one has to do with 7.5 announcements. And I'm questioning, I would like to have the deputy mayor and myself be bringing comments back from county council, and I'm wondering if that's where we would put that, or whether we should have another spot where it would be reporting back, and whether it's from county council or from other committees that we sit on. Would we do that under announcements?
To you, Mayor Carlton, we would see that as appropriate to bring any form of announcement or update from county council under that heading.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And under 23, consent agenda. So when we have minutes of other committees and boards placed there, there are minutes that we are not approving ourselves, because they're approved elsewhere, but we have members sitting on those boards. So if there were additional information, say to come back from Gray Sobel, would we have to pull those minutes to speak to it? Or could that be something that could just be addressed as part of the consent agenda, where a member on one of those outside committees or boards would just speak to it with any new information?
So I'll start, and then invite our acting clerk to make sure I'm on point here. So we would see the consent agenda passing as a unit. If there's a report that a council member wants to hold for discussion or comment, if there are minutes, so using Gray Sobel Conservation Authority as the example, if the minutes, the minutes could pass on the consent agenda, or a council member could pull them for discussion, or for an update.
Okay. I had another question, now I forget what it was. Oh, no, it was comment to do with consent agenda. So part of what's changing there is basic staff reports, such as, say, the water systems and things like that, will appear on consent agenda. We won't be passing a separate motion to pass every one of those staff reports. So it's really just a heads up to all of council to be aware of that, that if you want special discussion on one of those staff reports, it'll have to get pulled off that consent agenda. The larger reports that will need to be spoken to will not appear there, they'll appear under staff reports, but it's the smaller reports that are repetitive that would show up in consent agenda. Counselor Coburn, I believe you have a question now.
Actually, I think you answered it when you said it's the ones that are recurring. And so it wouldn't be anything new that council should be paying attention to. My concern is, in the past, we've looked at consent agenda and haven't given it maybe the once-over, the way we're going to need to in the future, if this is the case. But if it's something new that council is to approve, that we haven't had a chance to just discuss before, I'm hearing that that won't be under the consent agenda.
So through you, Mayor Carlton, that's how we would view it as well. So I think the example that you used is, last year, there were four separate reports that are annual regulatory reports updating council on the state of our water systems. They're pretty repetitive, and to have staff speak to those reports, or those to sit on a discussion portion of an agenda seems a bit redundant. But if we're bringing forward, and we'll use our judgment, if something needs a presentation, or we know that this is going to be an item where people in general public are going to want to speak to the item, or we know there's going to be discussion, those will appear as staff reports.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on? Then we have a mover and seconder. I will call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. So we are moving on to Planning Department. So the recommendation is that council support the request to extend draft approval for Plan of Subdivision 42T 2017-05 for Part Lot 27, Concession III, Part 1 of Plan 16R 11376, and South Part of Lot 27, Concession III, Part 1 of Plan 16R 11378, Geographic Township of Sarawak, known as Deerfield Acres, for further three years to July 23, 2026, and that the $990 application fee be waived, as the township has not constructed the infrastructure required to service the subdivision. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Coburn and Counselor Thompson. We'll turn it over to staff for any further information on that. Are there any questions? Jen, are you speaking to this first?
I can, if that's what council would like, or I can answer questions.
Okay, let's go to Counselor Day with your question on that.
Hi. So, please let me know if I'm breaking any procedural guidelines, since it's my first time speaking in council, about decision-making processes. I was just hoping to get some clarification of, or make a few comments before we officially approve this. I was curious about the use of the word infill, given my understanding of that term from a planning process, and seeing that some of the land that's being filled, or being used, is currently a wetland, and there's, or part of a wetland, and there's some forest involved. I do have, would you like me to ask one question at a time and have a chance to respond, or would you like me to just ramble on and say it all at once?
Jen, what would you like?
I'll be happy to answer one question at a time.
So that's my first, just clarification about the word infill, in the context of the development, when I think it was Street A involved, some infill of a wetland to construct Street A.
So, when this subdivision was approved, prior to it being approved, the developer went through a process where studies were conducted, and they were reviewed by the Conservation Authority and the county, the township, as well as peer reviewers. So with regards to a part of a wetland being filled in, there was a section of the property that did exhibit some environmental characteristics. The environmental impact study did note that development would be, wouldn't negatively impact the features, provided that a series of processes were followed. So that was all approved through the draft plan approval process at the county level with support from the township. So there are measures in place for development to occur with protections in place to protect any sensitive features on the property.
Thank you for that. And I do realize that I am coming into this process long after approvals have been put in place, and I don't want to, I'm not asking questions to slow the procedure down, just to make sure I fully understand the scenario. Will we be able to, I'm sure there's a procedure, or a way to do this that I'm not aware of yet, to look at the environmental assessment from, was it three years ago, before final approvals are put in place?
So this subdivision has already been approved. It was approved three years ago. So what this application is asking for is an extension of that approval. And the reason why they need an extension of the approval is they haven't been able to meet those conditions of draft approval. One of the reasons is that they're servicing constraints in place, so the connections that they need, the water and sewer connections they need to connect to, aren't in place. So, or sorry, I believe the water one is, but the sewer one isn't in place yet, so they can't move forward with developing the property and being able to register it as a subdivision. So that's because it's already been approved, there's a three-year timeframe on the approval, and then the process is for the developer to come back and request that the Township Council support an extension. And because the county is the approval authority for plans of subdivision, we would then forward that letter of support to the county Planning Department to approve that extension request. So I can, all of the documents that approved this, or that were submitted in support of the application, are still available on the County of Gray website, under their Planning Applications page. I would be more than happy to email council links to those documents, and I can also be available to have further discussions on the technical process of the subdivision approval, if that would help.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, and I am aware of the cyclical nature of this work, where the staff, every four years, have to put up with some of us, figuring out how all of this works. I have one final question. And is there any thoughts around the timing of environmental assessments? Given the nature of our current, of the climate changing more quickly, I wonder if the subdivision is delayed and being built, if there are any changes in the environment in terms of extreme weather impacts, or water course changes, or the states of threatened species that needs to be noted if we're delayed another, if it's being delayed another three years.
So the development isn't necessarily being delayed for another three years. What will happen is, the developer has submitted an application for subdivision agreement. Through that process, the township will then require engineered grading and drainage plans, servicing connection plans, infrastructure development plans. Through that process, then, we would have an opportunity to review the, to review the site conditions. And I will have to go back and check the conditions of the EIS and the draft conditions of approval, there are a number of them, to see if there's any requirement for a resubmission or a reevaluation of any of the environmental studies.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Counselor Day. Madam CAO, did I see you with your, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Jen. Are there any other questions? Okay, I will call the vote, all in favor. Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you. So the next is our Committee of Adjustment Appointment of Council Members. Whereas council endorsed ratification of bylaw 2022-042, being a bylaw to establish a Committee of Adjustment and committee procedures at their meeting on July 13, 2022, and whereas Section 4.5 of bylaw 2022-042 requires two members of council to be appointed to the Township Committee of Adjustment, now therefore, council hereby appoints two members to said committee for the 2022 to 2026 council term. I need a mover and a seconder to put it on the floor. Counselor Day? Counselor Coburn? Is there any discussion? Can I ask the acting clerk to tell us what our next step is here?
Through you, Mayor Carlton, you can now have discussion about which two of you would like to be on the Committee of Adjustment. And then we can amend the motion that's on the floor to include the names of those two members.
Okay. So do we have volunteers for this, to start with? Counselor Coburn, go ahead with questions.
Will the timing of those meetings be kept consistent with what we saw last term? I think it was the third Tuesday of the month.
Okay. So, volunteers to be on that committee? Counselor Thompson, thank you. And Counselor Coburn?
Thanks. Oh, sorry, I was going to speak. Sorry.
Go ahead. We thought you were volunteering.
I'm happy to volunteer, but I'm also happy not to if some of our new members have a real interest. And so my comment, or my question was going to be, should we be looking at these appointments in the context of all the other appointments? That's my only, that's my only comment. So I don't want us to be hasty and throw names out here, and then find people are extended and included in this one, and maybe they would like to have membership on another committee. So, again, if we need to make a decision tonight, I'm happy to sit on it, I'm also happy to step away if a new member would, has a particular interest.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. I'll turn it over to our CAO.
Thank you, Mayor Carlton, and there is some urgency to make the appointments tonight. Otherwise, we would have combined them with the other appointments. There's some training that needs to happen if we're going to stay on track with Committee of Adjustment business, starting in January. So I think Ms. Burnett may want to comment, but I think after the two appointments today, we can get the citizen appointments and the two council members together, and do the required training in December. Thank you.
So just before I turn it over to Ms. Burnett, how much training, how much time is involved in that, so that everybody's aware of the time commitment before they may be off of their hands? Can I turn that over to you then, Jen?
Yes, thank you. So there's a two-hour training session scheduled for the 13th of December, so I will review the committee, the purpose of the committee, the decisions, you know, what constitutes a minor variance. And then the Ontario Association of Committees of Adjustment, they have put out a training modules. So the modules are, there's six modules, they're about 15 minutes each to do online, and then there's a test at the end. And that is pretty much the training portion. The the OCA, which is the Ontario Committee, Ontario Association of Committees of Adjustment, they're actually revising those training modules, so they're not available right now, because they're bringing them, they're updating them because of the changes through Bill 23. So the, they will be, I believe, available later this week. So I would send those out as soon as they're available. And then in terms of a time commitment, we typically, like as the report indicates, we typically have about maybe four applications a month. There will be a number of them on the January, at the January meeting, because we haven't had any Committee of Adjustment meetings since September. And then, in order to prepare for the meetings, in order to be able to make decisions, reviewing the reports would probably maybe take about an hour of your time once a month. I'm not sure if that answers the question in terms of time, timing?
I think it does. I see Counselor Thompson has another question. Go ahead, please.
So, it's not another question, but I can appreciate, then, I guess that we need to have an appointment for the Committee of Adjustment for tonight, which is fine. So, I guess I would say it this way. If we are going to choose the committees that we're on, and this would count against my choices, it would not be my first choice. So I would withdraw my name and give it to someone else. So I think, the problem is, I think we need somebody tonight. So my suggestion is, we neither need to slow this appointment down, which seems improbable, or speed the other ones up. Because if, I'm assuming we're looking for equity of assignment, and I don't want to, I would be thrilled to be on the Committee of Adjustment, but it wouldn't be my first choice for committees, I think.
Counselor Day, go ahead.
Is it possible to have an interim member on the Committee of Adjustment?
I would think with the training that needs to happen, that that might not be possible. In answer to counsel- In answer to councillor Thompson's comment about equity on committees, I think it's necessary for us to look at things a little differently now, given that in the past, we haven't had the majority of our council working full-time. So I don't think it's reasonable to expect everybody to take on an equal amount. I think some may find there are some committees they could step up to quite easily and would find other committees onerous. So I don't think equity or keeping everybody equally placed on committees is necessarily the way we want to go anywhere. It may happen that way, but I think we have to be aware that some who are working full-time would find that very difficult. So if that makes sense and if council can somewhat agree with that type of idea, I think we need to get this committee in place tonight so that staff can get the training going and get things on track for committee of adjustment starting in January. I do have another question. It would be about what, on December 13th, two hours for training? There's already emergency planning meeting that morning. Is this going to be afternoon or what time were you planning on that?
It, it would occur at this, at five o'clock, which is what every, the committee of adjustment meetings will be held.
Okay, thank you. Just in case that makes a difference for somebody as to when the training's taking place. So do we have volunteers then? Anybody interested in doing this? Knowing that the meetings would be at five o'clock on, is it third Tuesday of every month? Councillor Day, go ahead.
I will say, as a new councillor, it's hard to know, given I don't feel like I know all the other committees that are going to be discussed later on. And I imagine Isaac is even more underprepared to answer this question tonight. And who knows, maybe he did a lot of research in advance. But I find this question a hard one to answer without context.
I understand that, yes. Councillor Coburn?
Yeah, I just want to go back to councillor Thompson's remark about maybe speeding up the, the appointments of our other committees for the next meeting and delaying this one. Is there any way we can keep the committee of adjustment as council as a whole, the way we've done for the past four years until we decide who the appointments are for the various committees? I'm just not sure how the new bylaw reads, if that's to be in place and if that could be waived or altered to give us a little more time. Through you, Mayor Carlton, I'll, I'll speak. Well, our clerk is looking up the, the answer. I think in, in terms of speeding up the other appointments, that's going to be difficult for us to do in a week. So that, that is planned for January. I think Carly is looking up the answer to the question, can we do some sort of interim solution until we get to that point? And it really is difficult to delay the appointment of committee of adjustment if we want to continue business in January, so.
So I'm just thinking that would mean, go ahead.
One more point, sorry, just popped back into my head. We have three citizen appointments that have already happened and they're waiting, kind of in the wings to get going too. So just another consideration.
Councillor Coburn?
I, I have to apologize whenever, I think it was Jen maybe, that said the meetings were at five o'clock. For some reason, I was thinking that was in the afternoon and I might be getting it mixed up with the fire board meetings. And so I actually have a conflict on Tuesdays at that timeframe when they start at five, so I'm gonna have to withdraw my name as well.
Acting clerk, please go ahead.
Through you, Mayor Carlton. So this committee of adjustment procedure bylaw came into effect on the 13th of July, which means that we're now bound by that new structure being the hybrid between citizen and council members. Now, quorum for committee of adjustment is three members and there are three citizen appointments. So I don't know if we would recommend doing an interim appointment of councillors because I believe that may affect Jen's training. I think her, her preference is to train the committee as a whole. The general report with the committee appointments will be coming forward on January 11th at the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. And that was one of my concerns was the training that's scheduled to take place on Tuesday to train all of us would seem rather redundant. But that's what we'd be doing if we were trying to keep all of council as committee of adjustment. So. Councillor Coburn?
Sorry, Jen, can I ask another question? And I think you already stated this, but how long are those meetings typically? And I should know the answer to this since I've been attending them for four years. But are we looking at like an hour, an hour and a half? I'm just trying to fit it into my other commitment on Tuesday evenings to see if I can race from one, one to the other.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. So last year, some of the meetings were 20 minutes long. You have the option to participate virtually. And in some cases, like where we have, we, I think we have six applications for the January 17th meeting. That meeting would probably run for, for over an hour. And it also too depends on the, the number of questions that, that are received, as well as if there's anyone that comes to speak to the application or ask for clarification on the applications.
Thank you, Jen. Madam CAO, do you have a comment there?
Through you, Mayor Carlton. Jen, I just wondered if you could just give a brief overview. We're not talking at committee of adjustment about zoning bylaw amendment applications. These are minor variances, correct?
That, that is correct. So there, there are applications that are minor in nature. The majority of minor variances we see are, are for a reduction in a side yard setback or an increase in lot coverage. They're typically not accompanied by significant reports. So what we do see is lock rating and drainage plans from engineers, just to demonstrate that, that the lot can accommodate the, the new development. And they're, they're generally not related applications unless it's a consent application where council would then consider the, the implementing bylaw.
Thank you. So we're back to the volunteer thing. And if there's one person on council willing to put their name forward, I can put my name forward to be on it. I just wanted to give everybody else a choice first. Councillor Day?
What would be the ideal background of a committee man, or a councillor for this particular committee? There is the training, of course, but if you, if, if you as planner were looking for somebody to sit on that committee, is there a certain educational background or work background that would be beneficial for it?
I think if I could speak to that, I think our three public members are very well qualified. So they have all the background. As councillors, we don't have to have specific educational backgrounds to be here. Am I correct in that, Jen? That our three public members are very well qualified for this?
Yes, two, two of our members are professional planners and another member does have a, a long history and, work history of processes and, and procedures. We like to have a variety of experience at the, at the table. It's important that when an application is being considered, that we have, we're able to look at it from a, a number of different lenses. So I think that everybody has the ability to contribute to making a good decision for the township through, through this committee. And I don't think that restricting the committee to only people that have planning experience would necessarily be beneficial. So we would welcome, welcome everybody.
I, I'm not against volunteering for this. My only concern is that by volunteering for this, I don't know what, I don't know, I genuinely do not know about all the other committees that I would, as a result, not necessarily have the opportunity to say I'd like to sit on.
I don't think sitting on this one is going to preclude you from being able to sit on the other ones. This one's rather a special kind of creature of council in the way it's set up because we used to have it that all of council were on it. But that is not the normal in most municipalities. It's normally more public with only a couple of council members on. So we are going to what's, we've changed over in this last six months to going with what's a nor, more normal setup for a committee of adjustment. So I don't think sitting on this one's going to preclude anyone from sitting on another one, if that's a concern. Are you willing to put your name forward? Councillor Coburn?
I feel reassured regarding the timelines. So if, if someone else wishes to take this one on, I'm happy to, to let it go. But if I don't want people to feel stuck or unsure otherwise, I, I would accept this appointment.
Okay, thank you. Are you willing to, or councillor Thompson?
I have no, no new comments. If it's, if it doesn't affect the other committees, the appointment on other committees, I'm fine to do it. But if someone else has an interest, I'm also still happy to step aside. So if councillor Day is interested, go for it.
At this point, I would prefer not to make final committee decisions. If councillor Thompson is happy to sit on the committee, then I am happy to defer to his expertise at this point in time or experience.
Thank you. So councillor Thompson, there's still the option that I would do that if you feel disinclined to. I will leave that entirely up to you.
I'm, I'm happy, still happy to accept the appointment. Yep, I'm okay with it.
Okay. So can we, I'm taking that as a yes? And if council would allow me, I will read an amendment or amended recommendation here that will have us putting the names in instead of just appointing two members. So the new recommendation would be, whereas council endorsed ratification of bylaw 2022-042 being a bylaw to establish a committee of adjustment and committee procedures at their meeting on July 13th, 2022, and whereas section 4.5 of bylaw 2022-042 requires two members of council to be appointed to the township committee of adjustment, now therefore, council hereby appoints councillor Coburn and councillor Thompson, members to said committee for the 2022 to 2026 council term. So I have now forgotten who the mover and seconder were in the original. To be able to ask. Acting clerk, please.
Mayor Carlton, you do need a mover and seconder for this amendment.
Okay, so we move in second this one, pass this one, and then go back to the original? Okay. So I need a mover and seconder on this one. Deputy Mayor Pringle? Councillor Day? I will call the vote all in favor. Carried. Thank you. So then we go back to the mover and seconder on the first and we don't have, is there any further discussion on the original motion? I will call the vote all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, carried. Thank you very much. Okay. We're on to 8.2.3, application for support of condominium exemption Georgian planning solutions. Recommendation that the township of Georgian Bluffs is satisfied that all matters under section 51 and 51.1 of the Planning Act have been addressed to their satisfaction and that development of the lands is addressed through the existing master development agreement, master subdivision agreement, the site plan agreements, and the Ontario Building Code, and that the township supports an exemption from section 51 of the Planning Act for the development legally described as Plan 16M15, Part Block 75, Registered Plan 16R11409, Parts 5, 6, 8, and 9, and Plan 16M15, Part Block 75, Registered Plan 16R11409, Part 10, and further that this resolution be forwarded to the County of Gray and the applicant. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Sholice and councillor Thompson? Is there any discussion? Does staff have any comments to make on this one?
Yes, so this is a, this is a typical request for a plan of condominium. We know that when a subdivision or condominium development moves forward, it's done in phases. And that's what's happening here. So the developer reads, they have finished building block 11 and block 17. And so within those two blocks, each have five townhouse units. So the, they, they've pretty much been sold. Some of them have people living in them and they are now ready to be, to be registered and for the ownership to, to change hands from Reeds to, to the, the people who are purchasing them. So this is basically an administrative process. And there, in the Act, there are processes where, instead of having to move through a full approval process again, because all, we have a number of development agreements registered on title, the building permits have been issued, the structure's been built, council can support a, an exemption to, to the process and, and submit the, that, that approval to the County of Gray, who are the, the subdivision, or the approval authority for plans of condominium. And this way, the, the block 11 and 17 can be, can be registered.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I will call the question then, all in favor. Anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We're on to 8.2.4, award community improvement plan project to J.L. Richards and Associates Limited. Recommendation that township purchasing bylaw 2019-047 be waived and that the contract for the creation of a community improvement plan be awarded to J.L. Richards and Associates Limited at an upset limit fee of $24,624 excluding HST. Could I have a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor? Councillor Day? And a seconder, deputy mayor Pringle? Is there any discussion or, Jen, did you want to speak to this one first before I take questions from council?
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So questions? Councillor Coburn, go ahead.
At the risk of asking the stupid question of the night, what's an upset limit fee? Is this, is this a fee? Is this a, a limit that they can go above the, the quote if necessary? Or what, what's the definition of that?
I believe that that is the, the maximum amount. And if, if they have to go above that, then they would need approval from the township. It's writ, as it's written in their, in their fee proposal.
Thank you. Councillor Coburn, go ahead.
And so this is, so as, as a rule, I'm, I'm generally not inclined to waive the RFP process because we, we want to make sure we're, we're getting the best possible deal. I under- I understand the rationale provided for this one. Can you just let us know what, what other plan has this company been working on for us? Is it the, the OP refresh or the strategic plan?
No, through you, Mayor Carlton, it's the official plan. And because they understand the overarching policies, we're likely getting a much better rate of return.
That answers your question? Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Day, go ahead.
I have two questions. One is about the steering committee. Who would that be composed of and how would they be selected?
Who can speak to this one, the steering committee that would be involved with this?
Mayor Carl- Carlton, could I ask for some clarification on that?
I seem to remember myself reading in that report that there would be a steering committee involved with this, um, community improvement plan project.
That is something that would be determined once the contract is awarded and it would be, um, with the consultants, then it would be determined how to go about creating that committee. It's typically an expression of interest and we receive, um, we, we receive, um, applications or people express interest in, in being on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, from staff or council or the community or all three? I think we'll let C A O step in here and answer.
Yeah, through, through you, Mayor Carlton, um, that would be part of their proposal is how we comprise the committee. I might envision that county economic, economic development might be part of it. It might be council member, uh, council member, staff, um, and people from the business community and, and the public. Not sure at this point, uh, they will come with their, you know, sort of best practice recommendation.
That answered the question?
It does. Thank you. May I ask another as well?
You go right ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I see that there are several objectives, including encouraging the proficient provision and maintenance of physical structures. They're all on page, um, ooh, sorry, that may not be very helpful. There's a list there. I was wondering if all those objectives are equal in value or if some take precedence over the others. And during the election, a lot of us spoke about using a climate lens to make decisions for the municipality. So I just, I, when we talk about economic development, I'm wondering how much of a climate lens is being used to consider future, like how intertwined those concepts are in our municipal, in our municipal growth. Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Carlton, I, I don't think we can answer the question about how much those are weighted, that, that is actually part of us developing our plan.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I will now call the vote, all in favor. Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Onto item number nine, public question period. Madam Acting Clerk, are there any public questions for consideration of the committee? Thank you. So there is no unfinished business. So we're on to new business. And somewhere here in my notes, um, Counselor Coburn. Oh, sorry, I think first we're doing eleven point one Potawatomi Water Services. I apologize. So the recommendation is, whereas township council has received concerns regarding water services from the Potawatomi community for several years. And whereas council heard most recently from a resident delegation at their September twenty-first meeting expressing continued concerns. And whereas the township of Georgian Bluffs has acknowledged a need to explore an alternate water service for the Potawatomi area of the township. And whereas extension of water service from the city of Owensound to the Potawatomi area may be a viable option. Now there be it resolved, now therefore be it resolved, that the mayor draft a letter to the City of Owensound Council on behalf of the Township of Georgian Bluffs Council, requesting a meeting of the CAOs and mayors of the two municipalities to explore the viability of city water services being extended to the Potawatomi area of the township. So could I have a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor? Counselor Coburn, Counselor Day? Any discussion, any questions? Counselor Winters, go ahead, please.
If I may, Your Worship, um, one of the comments I have is, is do you want to limit it to just talking about water extension services? And not the option of other services, shared services, or other efficiencies? Again, I think one of the things with any agreement when you approach somebody is to, to ask for something, you have to be willing to give something.
Excellent point. Um, Madam C A O?
Through you, Mayor Carlton, Counselor Winters brings up a, a really good point. I think it would be the intention to start with our ask. But the, the point is well taken that, um, there are many things that we could be collaborating on. My counterpart and I have had many discussions about, uh, potential service, services that we could provide, services that Owensound could provide. I guess I would ask the council member the question, is there comfort that that would be the intent or would you be looking at rewarding the motion?
No, I, I appreciate that. I, I think as long as there was some intent there, I'm okay with that. I just don't think going in with one pigeonhole idea is, it's a good idea this time, right? Let's go with open mind and see what benefit both municipalities.
Yes, good point. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions on this? Deputy Mayor Pringle, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor Carlton. Yeah, it's just really good to see something going forward with this. Been too long. I've only been involved with it for four years and that's been too long, so. People, Potawatomi Village, um, hopefully we can get something started and uh, going with what Counselor Winters said too there, yeah, it's, it's good to leave the options open to look at more avenues. Um, and as we've all heard in the last month from everybody we've talked to, we've got to work together. So let's get it out there and get it started and, and we will be that team player out here. So I just wanted to add a comment.
Excellent, thank you. I will now call the question then, all in favor. Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Coburn then, over to you.
Oh, these are for the two additional items, Mayor Carlton?
Yes.
Um, okay, so my first one, um, has to do with the change on our website. We had, um, us, uh, right on the, on our first webpage, we had a report a concern button where people could primarily use that as a way to report, um, problems, concerns, bylaw infractions. And it has since changed to, to be called Contact Georgian Bluffs. I'm wondering if we might want to consider moving that back to report a concern. I, I have had a few ratepayers ask why the change. I, I think if I recall correctly, the intent initially was to, um, to have a, an efficient way to report concerns and a speedy response back from staff. And I feel like it was working really well. It's also a great tool for data, data collection. I just, I'm concerned that the, the Contact Georgian Bluffs, though it sounds, um, kinder and gentler, I wonder if it's lost its effect, um, to a certain extent. And, and if it might be, um, confusing for folks when they go there, if they have a concern that they want to report. Has it lost, um, its meaning for people? I do get that we don't just want to hear complaints and concerns. I totally appreciate staff's perspective on that. I wonder if we could go back to calling that report a concern and have a different mechanism for folks who want to offer suggestions, provide compliments, and have dialogue about other things other than concerns. And I do note that that, that is, um, when, when I did a, a quick Google search for other municipalities, it tends to be the wording that's used elsewhere. For example, the city of Owensound in Meaford. So to me, it's just clarity for folks who, who need to get a response fairly quickly and, and need to know sometimes off hours, how to get through to, um, bylaw and, and other folks who would be responding to their concerns.
So, uh, through you, Mayor Carlton, it's actually not staff's perspective. We've, we've heard from a lot of people, um, that they kind of liked the Contact G B. So it's interesting if you're hearing from some who are more confused. I mean, I can take that back to staff, but we've done a lot of research on, um, you know, how best to connect. It still is the same backend. They still get the same service. I think it was just expanding it beyond, um, sort of the negative concern aspect. And, and it's a way to connect with anybody in the township. And, uh, you know, concerns are vetted, uh, other suggestions are vetted on the backend, so. Interesting.
I think my comment on that one would be, it's really just the name on a button on the website. So we can put any name there. I'll turn it over to Acting Clerk.
Yes, so, um, report a concern is still exactly the same. So the template that you're seeing is exactly the same form. So, um, and all the categories are the same. The intent of the form originally was a place that, you know, people could go and report things. But then we were noticing that different inquiries were coming in. So, um, we're seeing, you know, inquiries for every service area in the township. So, um, in terms of tracking and the data, um, what happens is those concerns and inquiries as they come in are categorized. So we're still able to differentiate what's a concern versus what's an inquiry, if that's helpful. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, no, my, my concern was not what happens at staff's end. I'm quite sure that that's the same. The folks that have spoken up about this where, where, uh, with me, uh, I think they're just used to seeing the words and we can say it's just wording on a button, but that wording matters. We, we all know that, that wording matters when it comes to using a website. And it seems to me that they were used to using it, uh, for that purpose. And then we went and, and had a name change and it just seems more ambiguous to me. It's not a, a big thing, but I, I guess I would just maybe put a plug in for, um, if something's working, then maybe we don't, we don't change it. Just, it's just a suggestion.
Thank you. Counselor Winters.
If I may, I, I mean, I, I agree with Counselor Coburn there and I, and I think if we can change some wording and call it, you know, report a concern slash Contact G B. Um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, when I look at the word contact on the website, to me, that's going to give me a staff directory. You know, that, that's what that is. It's mailing address. It's that sort of thing. But if I may, Worship, through yourself to the C A O, is it the expectation when somebody reports something through Contact G B, report a concern, is that they will be contacted by a member of, staff member? I, I, you know, through my, my campaign and through this last little weather event, I've had several people say to me that they reported stuff but never got a communication back. But I didn't know whether that's the expectation is to expect a response or is it just report a concern?
Through you, uh, Mayor Carlton, it could be either. It depends on whether the person puts contact information into the system. I, I'm going to, I'm going to say that the weather event we had was extraordinary. So one of the things that happens is as the people who are out dealing with the service that needs to be provided are also the people who provide the updates in the system. And it might take them a couple of days to provide those updates. But if I put my email address in, I get a response every time that, that file is updated. There's certain categories in the system that I get the email update as staff go in and do their, their thing. So, but if, if a resident doesn't put any contact information in, then, then no, they're not going to get contacted by staff.
Counselor Winters, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not trying to be judgmental, but I haven't got a receipt, I haven't received a comment back yet and all my contact information was included. I thought I would try this system to see what was happening.
And if you want.
No response. I got the six-digit code. Uh, I watched the situation for four days, um, but no response back. So I didn't know what I was to tell the public when I inquired with myself.
Sure, and I'm happy to follow up with you on your file.
Any other comments or do we move on with the next item? Go ahead. You've got another item? Go ahead.
I do. Thank you. Um, so the, my, my second question is just, um, in response to a flurry of emails regarding the, the renovations to Campbell Community Center and again, not to, uh, try to evoke any debate or discussion. I just wonder if it would be helpful for folks if they knew, um, just briefly and quickly, what's the timeline? I know our C A O, um, has, um, indicated that the renovations are to be complete. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cynthia, by the end of, uh, twenty twenty-three. But I think people are looking at knowing where are we in that process right now. And my understanding is we have yet to receive the drawings from the architect and to approve a final design by council. So if you could just, um, make a quick comment on that question, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And through you, Mayor Carlton, um, we've had an open house in September that was hosted at the Campbell Arena slash Community Center, um, well attended and sought input from folks. We hosted at the Shallow Lake Arena on November eighth. Basically a workshop, a design concept workshop. I think I sent to council various different means that we've communicated, uh, on this project. I think we've reached over twenty-three hundred people in various different means. Final design will be coming to council early in the new year. We'll be having, what the architects are doing is a final concept design. They're doing costing so that, uh, you know, we can, we can look at whether we're in budget, whether we have to look at maybe phasing a few things. Construction will begin, uh, following council's approval after the, the tender process. And yes, uh, we have a timeline to meet related to external funding that is the end of twenty twenty-three.
So, um, we'll be receiving one design from the architect as far as you know at this point in time? Or will there be some, um, opportunity for tweaks to those designs? I'm, I mean, I imagine there will be, but I'm just throwing the question.
Uh, we would hope not many, um, because it really is, we're getting, we're really getting down to the tight timeline. That's why we've been consulting all fall. And, um, really, council, you're going to hear what we've heard from the community. You're going to get the design, uh, but if there's too much delay in redoing the design, we have no hope in finishing the project by the end of twenty twenty-three.
I would add to that. I attended the November eighth meeting out at Shallow Lake Community Center. And the architect presented two separate designs that evening. And the people who were there went into three separate groups to look at those designs. And pretty much between the three groups revised the designs to the same thing. Were almost unanimous in what they felt the final design should be on that. So I think they did a really good job of taking the architect's concepts and making it fit what they felt would be needed or would work for, um, Campbell Community Center. So I think we're well on track there. So go ahead, Counselor Coburn.
Sorry, thank you. I, I actually missed that, um, meeting. How many folks attended that one where they were put into three groups?
Uh, through you, Mayor Carlton, I think there was around about fifteen, twelve, fifteen. But the designs have been up on the website and I'd have to check stats with staff as to how many hits and how many comments we got afterwards. There were quite a few, uh, between the first open house and the, the second workshop. And we left the concepts up for a, I think it was two weeks after the second workshop to receive comments.
I'm actually going to say, I think we had about six people in each group, six to seven people in each group.
Could be.
Yeah, because I know the. Yeah, because I know the group I was in, there were six residents in that group, and I think the others were all about the same size. So, I mean, when you think of our population, wasn't a lot, but they were pretty interested and pretty committed and had some really good ideas and thoughts on it. So I think that's a good step forward, because they were members of that community that would plan on using that facility once it's all ready, so. So if there's no other questions or comments on that, we will move on. Item 12, notice of motion. Does any member wish to provide a notice of motion? Counselor Coburn?
I have two, actually. I will be bringing back motions related to development charges and short-term accommodations.
Okay, I will leave it to you to work with staff to have those on an upcoming agenda then. We have no closed session, and the date of our next regular meeting will be December 14th at 5:00 P. M. in council chambers here. Could I have someone move adjournment, please? Counselor Coburn, Deputy Mayor Pringle, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, everyone. See you next Wednesday.